Y'all ready? You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Let's do this.
Okay.
I'd like to call this meeting order to convene our regular meeting here at our county auditorium. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our co-chair for our pledge and allegiance.
I'd like to invite members from the Sampson County Veterans Council to come and lead us in the pledge and the opening prayer, please.
Can we get everyone standing?
Oh dear, hear me, Father, we come before you once again.
Yes, Lord.
Many blessed and well, and Lord, we just ask you to look upon this council role, uh, for many members of the council of Sampson County community. And Lord, we just asking you to continue to watch your spiritual wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, and Lord, most of all, be grateful to serve and to help us to better discern each teaching among of us. And Lord, we just asking you, whatever part of hardship it is, Lord, help us to reach across the heart and come to a mutual agreement. And Lord, we asking you to continue to be the standard barriers that you call us to be, and Lord, help us to continue to be faithful members and to do in order to do your service. And Lord, we just asking you to like, continue to bless us and we thank you for all that you have done for us, life, health, and strength. And Lord, let this business meeting go according to your plans and your will and glory. And Lord, this is our servant prayer, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
For the team, John, present arms.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Order, sermon.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And thank y'all for that. We appreciate y'all doing that for us. At this time, I'll need someone to approve the agenda, please.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right, we're going to move right along. We're going to go into our updates and presentation and I'm going to call on Mr. Lance Easton and Daniel Jones for North Carolina DOT. It's your floor, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all having us. It's been a little while since we've been here, but good to be back, good to see some new faces and what I think will be some good relationships. So I'm going to dive into the maintenance DOT items we got happening right now. So in the county currently, we've got two roads closed, Bear Skin Road towards Salemburg. That pipe job started today. Took us a little while to get the right pipe. It's a big size pipe and I hope to have that open by the end of this week. We've got 50 closed towards Fason, a couple of big pipes there. That should be open tomorrow, we hope. We're also doing some hurricane prep as I hope some other people might be as well. We don't want to see a hurricane, but we got to be ready for all the people in the county in case we get one. So our employees are ready. That's when they shine. That's when they do what they do. So I want the people of the county to know that you've got some good folks at DOT that are ready and going to help take care of you if something arises. Kind of going into that, we've had a lot of rain recently. When we get those kind of rain events in short bursts, we get some flooding, we get some tough situations to maintain. We get a lot of people that call us. So I ask that if you hear those things, please be patient with us. We got influx of people. We've got help and we're going to get there. It just takes some time to weather the storm. So just if you hear anything, wanted you to hear that from me. Some good news for our office, we're around 40 employees, which is more than I think it's been a long time. So we've got some people to make some stuff happen and hopefully you see us around the county doing that. Some outreach events we've got coming up. We're going to do some touch truck events at some local fire departments, some expos. We're doing something at a Baptist church this week, just showing some kids that are hanging out there over there somewhere, some equipment. And if you hear about opportunities for DOT to do those things, we like to put us in a good light. We like to let kids play with yellow trucks. I mean, it's interesting to us and our people work around the county, so it brings them some happiness, be able to give back a little bit. We've got litter sweep coming up in September. You probably see us out doing that. If you hear about bad roads or bad areas, let us know. That's what we do those couple of weeks is pick up trash. So keep us in mind, call us if you've got certain areas that are worse than others. That's where we'll focus. And a couple more things. So our fiscal year runs July to July. Just wanted to give y'all some accomplishments we made over the past year. We performed about 52,000 linear foot of ditching. We put in about 1,200 foot of cross lines underneath highways. We put in close to 2,200 linear foot of driveways. I thought y'all might find that interesting because we put driveways in for new residences. So it shows some growth. I mean, you divide that by 20 and that's a lot of people. So good stuff for y'all. We've got some things in store for the next fiscal year, some of the same. Budget's a little bit different, but we make do, we improvise, and we'll keep doing what we do. So thank y'all for allowing me to give update this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening, sir.
Daniel Jones, NC DOT, as Lance referenced. It's good to be back with y'all. It's been some time, but I'm going to provide some construction updates for us. We have completed the bridge over Ward Swamp Bradshaw Road. It was accepted on April 30th. We recently completed the bridge on US 701 going towards Garland over Bill Swamp. Accepted it July 11th of this year. And we currently have just recently broke ground and started bridge replacement 85 on Boykin Bridge Road. The construction completion date is set for 6/14/2026. We're hopeful that the, you know, things will progress and we can get it done before the completion time, but that's where we're looking. Resurfacing contracts, we completed a contract that consisted of 15.3 miles paved. We have another contract that consists of 24.45 miles. That's roughly 91% complete. Active contract, or another active contract that we have is tentatively scheduled to begin at the end of August with 13.65 miles to be paved. Those routes are Keener Road, Carnegie Road, Preacher Henry Road, Summer Hill Road, and East Roseborough Street and East Clinton Street. Recently, we got another recently awarded resurfacing contract that consists of 21.7 miles and that will be paving NC 41 from Bladen County line to Ward Road and widening it. And then we'll be paving NC 55 Hornet Dunn Highway from Johnston County line to Hornet County line and Wildcat Road from NC 41 to Dr. Kerr Road. We've also got an active chip seal pavement preservation contract that we're looking to finish up, you know, starting back in August where we'll be applying the chip seal. Those routes are Butler Road, McPhail Road, Huntley School Road, Dudley Road, and Rabbit Street. And most recently, just wanted to touch on this, some of the, or the county manager and some unit heads with Sampson County attended a stakeholder meeting for a study that the department's conducting for US 421 for some safety improvements for intersections. That study is taking place from the New Hanover-Pendry County line up to Mount Gilead Church Road. And there are six intersections in Sampson County that's being looked at. Those are US 421 and Mount Gilead Church Road, 421 and Union School Road, 421 and River Road, US 421 and NC 903, US 421 and 41, and then US 421 and Willard Road. And that's all I have for updates, construction wise, but thank y'all for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Any questions?
I certainly appreciate all the work you're doing down in the Avon Ho Harrows Garland area. It's very much needed and residents appreciate it also. Thank you.
Daniel, is there any, you got anything you can bring to us about working on 24? I mean, I know some stuff and I think you know some stuff, but anything that we can share with the general public that we are moving forward and there's things that has happened?
So there are some concepts that are being looked at and some opportunities to advance NC 24 into the east dip. But as far as going into any detail, I'm not at liberty to say, but there are some options that are being evaluated to make it more appealing for funding.
Thank you. That's what I needed.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Appreciate y'all. All right, Ms. Jackson, I'm going to give you the floor, dear.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'll give you the express version of our annual update. There's no way that I can give you all of what we do in a matter of minutes and I want to be respectful of your time. But I also want you to know, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Happy to answer any questions that you all have at any time. So I'll give you a brief overview, kind of reminder of who we are, a couple of data points, as well as our community engagement efforts. We are one of four local management managed care organizations in the state of North Carolina. We're public. The other three is Partners, Alliance Health, as well as Vaya. And so we contract directly with the state to provide behavioral health managed care for individuals that have the most severe behavioral health needs, those that don't have insurance or may be underinsured. And at the heart of what we do, our commitment is to transform lives. We want to make sure that folks are receiving the services that they need around behavioral health care. On this particular slide, you'll see that we are 46 counties. Geographically, we are the largest LME MCO in the state. We cover a total population of around 3.1 million. And of that 3.1 million, we have a little over 50,000 of our members that's in tailored plan. And so we have three different health plans. So tailored plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the presentation. That's one of our newest plans that we implemented a year ago. And it covers not only behavioral health services, but physical health, pharmacy, non-emergency medical transportation, and long-term support services. So we went from managing behavioral health to now managing a person from a whole person perspective. And that's only for individuals that have Medicaid. We are at about 163,000 for Medicaid Direct. That's that older health plan, that fee-for-service model just for behavioral health services. And then about 287,000 who are uninsured. On this particular side, you'll see that local connections matter. We want to make sure that we are present in the community, that you can reach us. And the reason why we did that, well, we had to do a five-region model so that we could continue to have those local connections. So as you can see in the yellowish-greenish, that's where Sampson County lies. It's the South Central Region. It's a nine-county region that spans from Sampson all the way over to Carteret County. Each region has a dedicated vice president to service each county. We also have community engagement and empowerment staff, and we have community liaisons as well. And on the next slide, you'll see your representation. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that Sampson County has strong representation on our regional advisory board with Commissioner Lee and also Mr. James W. Simmons, known as JW. They bring a wealth of knowledge and we are so grateful and appreciative of their guidance and their advisement on Sampson County and the needs. You also have Nicole Harris, who is our consumer family and advocacy committee member for Sampson County. She lives in Sampson County. She works for the Autism Society. So she brings a wealth of knowledge with her as well. So again, just some very strong representation. Your community liaison coordinator is Katisha Jones. Her role is to go out, partner with the schools, have meetings with the health department, and just those key stakeholders in the community. We want to make sure that folks are educated on what the services are that we provide it, so that's part of her role. On this next slide, you will see the breakdown of how many individuals we serve. Across 46 counties, and this is just from July to December of 2024, we've served a little over 80,000 members just in that timeframe. And in that breakdown, we had 57,388 that was receiving mental health services, a little over 15,000 for substance use, and then a little over 18,000 for individuals that have intellectual developmental disabilities. And total spent just in that timeframe was over $802 million. Specific to Sampson County, we served 1,192 members during that timeframe. And this is an unduplicated count because what will happen is sometimes we have individuals that's receiving mental health treatment at the same time that they're receiving substance use treatment, so they could fall in those two or more categories. So it's an unduplicated count. Tailored plan, we talked about tailored plan and doing it for the whole person perspective. It was a lift tailored plan and it was on the heels of a major consolidation. We consolidated with East Point and Sand Hills to become Trillium. And we had to do that in 45 days. The state said, you got to consolidate 45 days. And then on top of that, we had to launch the tailored plan. There was lessons learned. We recognize that and when it's time to launch another plan of this magnitude, we will take those lessons and build on it so that we can do better the next go-round. But some of the lessons were around the member and provider call volume. It spiked. We also had felt like we needed to have more collaboration with the transportation vendor that we were partnering with, and then also working more closely with our providers on flexibilities and the state as well, because the state is the one that provides those flexibilities. The other piece to the puzzle is that we are not your only health plan serving individuals that have Medicaid. Back in July of 2021, there was five private companies that came in and they're managing the majority of individuals that have behavioral health needs, mild to moderate behavioral needs for Medicaid, those that are on Medicaid. And so you see on the slide here, Merre Health, Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Health, WellCare, and then Carolina Complete is in a couple of regions as well across the state. And so they are managing the majority of individuals on Medicaid. If you can look at this slide here, you'll see that 72% falls with the private companies and 28% falls with us, and that's for the 46 county catchment area. And then the next slide, you will see it broken down just for Sampson County. And so the numbers are about the same. You know, we serve 28% of individuals on Medicaid and then the private companies serve 72%. And those numbers are fluid, so on a day-to-day basis, you'll see individuals may change organizations or plans enrollment per se. So you'll see a change in those numbers on a day-to-day basis. Medicaid transformation, just a brief refresher on this, because we are still in the throes of Medicaid transformation. Back in 2021, talked about the standard plans coming in, but also we have the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians Tribal Option to launch as well. And that plan serves all of the tribal members, the federally recognized tribal members and their families. We kept the Medicaid Direct Plan during that time. That's that old model that I spoke about. And then Phase Two was launching the tailored plan. And then in Phase Three, that's where we are now, that's the foster care plan. The state had awarded Blue Cross Blue Shield last year a statewide plan to cover all children who are in foster care and their families. So we're in the process of transitioning about 11% of our membership to Healthy Blue. And the title of that new plan is Healthy Blue Care Together. We are working closely with the state, also with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have an internal transition team. Our goal is to make it as smooth transition as possible. We do not want our children and their families having interrupted care. We want them to receive their care during this transition. And so we're working closely with the state to help make that transition possible. This next slide just gives you an overview of the town halls that we did for the 18 real line in counties last year. There were several themes that emerged from the town halls, and so listed, I won't read all of those out to you, but you'll see our response to those themes. There was questions about RFP request for proposals, also about communicating with our providers and our family members and service expansions. And so we put a plan together to address some of those themes and they're listed here in the slide. For the project updates, this is not an all-inclusive list of all the projects that are occurring in Sampson County. This is just an insert and want to highlight a few. We do offer substance use prevention in the school. That's an option for the school systems here, mostly around fentanyl awareness. We want to make sure that our children are educated on the harms around that use of a particular drug that's kind of been ramping up for the past year. We also distribute naloxone kits as well as xylazane and fentanyl strips. We do have Sampson County deliveries at our office and we're ready to push those out to whatever agency you would like for us to send them to, whether it's your health department or EMS, we can get those out to you right away. We also offer summits and re-entry simulation. Education is so important, so we want to make sure that we're educating folks about behavioral health and just kind of the whole person care model and what we do as a managed care organization. You see here CHESS Health. That CHESS stands for Center for Health Enhancement System Studies. We've partnered with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to provide a free app for individuals who are in recovery. What's really neat about this app is that it has peer support specialists that are available 24/7, which means if we have someone in recovery and they need some support at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, they can reach out to a peer support specialist through that app to get some support there. Small business funding, we recognize that having a job and financial security are so important to the people that we serve. So we do offer some funding for small businesses, for individuals that we cover, whether or not it's a business that they're starting up or if it's one that they already have and just need some funding to support it. So that's another option that we provide. And then lastly, the Trillium Ultimate Living Assistant, this is a great program. It's for individuals that have intellectual developmental disability. It's an innovative technology-based program and it's about individuals having a better quality of life. So some of the things that it can do, it can remind individuals to take their medication. It will let them know that a door is open in their house. We actually won a few awards for this particular program, so we're really proud of Tula. It's AKA Tula. And then lastly, this slide here, I feel is the most important slide in this deck and it's how people can access care. We want to make sure that folks can get the right service at the right time and it's an ease for them to get the service. We offer a behavioral health crisis line that is 24/7/365. We have trained clinicians that operate that line. They would do a screening, they would triage, and then they would refer to a provider. We contract with about 1,600 providers in the state of North Carolina and then also some providers that's surrounding, in the surrounding states of North Carolina as well. And so our call center uses our, use our network to make those connections for people. And then we also have a member and recipient service line where folks can call with general questions and that's operated Monday through Saturday for 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And lastly, I will leave you all with, there's no wrong door to access care, which means if a person walks into one of our contracted provider agency, they do not have to call us to be seen. They can actually be, get their assessment done. And then of course, you know, there may, there's an authorization period for services that are not prior authorized, meaning that we have to make sure the individual has medical necessity to authorize the service. So I'll stop there and entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board?
I am just so honored to be a part of Trillium Board. As you can tell from Ms. Jackson's conversation that she's had with us tonight, the company is very professional. They understand the needs of Sampson County and they're willing to help us get our needs met. So I'm just so proud that I'm serving on that board and I can be able to help Sampson County a little bit more by bringing back some of the things that they do. Kudos to you and your organization, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
I know you guys have an overwhelming job. Challenges going forward, are you aware of the state adding any additional treatment beds?
Yes, that is on their radar, the crisis services, because it's recognized across the state that there's a need to increase crisis services. We actually just worked with a provider over in Lenora County to build a behavioral health urgent care and facility-based crisis for children and adolescents. And I can tell you, that is a tough service to build in counties, especially if it's a county that's a rural area, because it may not have as much foot traffic there to actually sustain the service. And so we worked with DHHS and they provided some crisis funding to help that provider build up. We also have some funding where we're doing respite for families that have children or adults who have intellectual developmental disability, because that too, we found that there was a need to increase in that area too. So the state is working on it as part of their larger strategic plan, and of course, they push it down to us to implement.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Thank you. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
At this time, I'll call on Mr. Mark Turlington for water projects update.
Good afternoon. I know y'all know what I'm up here to talk about. Water projects. I've got practically the same water projects I've been talking about for the last three or four months. To give you update on some of them, the water treatment plant on 403 across from Timberlake, work is still in progress there. We have had some hiccups, but we're hoping the manufacturer of the vessels that is supposed to filter the water will be in the next two or three weeks to make sure they're working properly. Maybe at that time, we can get the filter system up and running. That is our plan anyway. We have sent the contractor a letter to let him know that this is important and we need it done by set time, so we'll see how that goes. Midway Booster Pump and Tank, as I said in last meeting, we have the booster pump and the tank up and running. Now, we are going to meet with the contractor tomorrow on site to get some minor issues worked out, but overall, it's working and the people in the area should be able to tell a difference in their water pressure. Bonneville Booster Pump Station. Also tomorrow, the contractor's going to come out and look at it. Hopefully, we'll do a start-up on that booster pump station tomorrow and get it up and running, pumping water towards Roseborough and Altreville. The tank at Altreville, I mean, tank at Roseborough has been disinfected. We started filling it up with water today, where we can work with it tomorrow with our booster pump station. We are going to be using some of the water we're pumping and Roseborough water combined. We are going to be using some of the water we're pumping and Roseboro water, combining it to run it to Altreville. So we will not be completely cutting Roseboro off. Ivanhoe Project is still going well. I wrote it today. They've got about 65% of the water main in the ground now. It is running real smooth. I do want to elaborate on one thing. I received two phone calls last week about we have $3 million extra dollars for this project that we've used somewhere else. That is not true. All the money, the grant we got for this project is being used on this project. There was some sections of the project originally had to be dropped for money issues, but due to the fact, we did not have as many to sign up as we thought, we're able to use that money to add more roads, such as Wildcat Road between Ivanhoe and Dr. Carr. That was on the original drawings, the original plans. We had to drop it because we didn't think we were going to have enough funds. Well, now we do, so we're adding it on to, to do it. GFL Project, I've got Dewberry Engineer with me tonight, later on during your action items. She will go into details about the GFL Project, the Clement Project, the Southern Well Projects, which we have got. We have bitted that out. She'll be coming to you for approval to zip the bid on that. The grants for Warsaw and Mintz, they've all been submitted. We are waiting on it to be approved or not approved. That should come in August or September. Friday, we turn on Dunn Water. Everything north of Highway 13 up in the Plankview area, back towards Dunn, is now on Dunn Water. We did have some discoloration in our water the weekend that the men had to be out working on, but that was due to, we changed the flow of water. Instead of flow of water coming from Clonan, it's coming from Dunn, and it stirred up some sediment, but I think we've got that under control. They did work on the weekend to get that straight. Last of all, STAG Grant. We got a STAG Grant from Congress close to two years ago, and we've been jumping through all kinds of hoops trying to get that grant. I think Melissa now is working on getting a password for Sampson.gov. Is that correct, Melissa?
Sampson.gov and Grants.gov, yes.
To do application to try to get that grant. Hopefully, we'll be getting that grant shortly. We've been working on if we should be getting it shortly. And hopefully, if I get that $1 million, we can go ahead and start designing, surveying and all the old Warsaw Road and Mintz Highway, where we have that part out of the way, and we can move right into construction. That's my hope anyway. Any questions? Like I said, Dewberry will be talking with you later in depth about these projects.
Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, I need to get the consent agenda approved, if everybody's okay with it. Questions or thoughts? None?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Consent agenda, so move. Hand carried. All right. I'm going to ask Ms. Rosemary Mobley to come up, please. I'm going to open a public hearing at this time while she's coming up and have conversation.
Good afternoon. This public hearing is for our FY '27 grants, our administrative grant. The total amount is $283,686. Local match is $42,553. Our operating grant for those over 60 and disabled is $47,500 in-kind match of $23,750. And our capital grant is $149,475 with a local match of $14,948. Total for the three grants, $480,661. Total match, $81,257, which includes the $23,750 in-kind.
Do we have any discussion from the public? Have any questions, comments from this board? None? I will close our public comment section. And now we'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion. We received those. Want the, conduct a public hearing? Okay, we have? Okay? Along with the grants, so we're good? They have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries.
Thank you.
Move right into our action items. You are up next again for our Sampson Area Public Transportation System Safety Plan.
Yes. This is something that we are required by the state to have. We have to update it each year with a new authorized signature. Nothing in it has changed. We just have to get the signature on it.
Your thanks, ma'am. Any questions? I'll make a motion that we update this safety system as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This time, I'm going to ask if Mr. Ray Jordan will come up, please. He's going to bring us up to date on meeting dates for our economic development.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. In your agenda package, you have a request to set a meeting date for a special call meeting of the Board of Commissioners on August, Tuesday, August 19th at 2:00 p.m. 2:00 p.m., we're holding an elected officials workshop for economic development, at which you all are invited to attend, as well as the municipal leaders from all the municipalities across the county have been extended an invitation. Following that meeting, we will have our consultant, who we work with, Creative Economic Development Consulting, will be there at 6:00 to present to you and the public the strategic plan for Sampson County economic development. That, that should, that part of the program will probably last 30 to 40 minutes, depending on questions from the public and/or from you, at which time, we'd ask you to consider the plan and adopt it as your plan for the county economic development program.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any questions from the group? If not, I'll take a motion to go with the dates that he's got to on August 19th, 2025, at the Sampson County Expo. I'll have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right, Mr. Jim Johnson, if you will, please come up, sir. Reappointment of our deputy tax collector, please.
Good evening, members of the board. We have with us tonight Amanda Beatty. She's our deputy tax collector. Been employed with the county since 2013, supervising our tax office since 2017. Does a tremendous job for us. She was appointed deputy tax collector back in 2017, and we're here tonight to request a new appointment for your term.
Please, the board.
Move to appoint, pre-appoint. Second.
All right. All those in favor? Motion so carries. Thank you for your time, and I think you have a little swearing-in ceremony we have to go through.
Amanda Beatty is on the chair, that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and the laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent bare witness, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as deputy tax collector of Sampson County, and that I will not allow my actions as tax collector to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations. So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. We appreciate what you do for us. All right, Ms. Dana Hall, if you will, please come up. You got the care block grant.
This year, for the home and community care block grant, this is our grant that we get from state funds to fund our adult day center, our congregate nutrition sites, home delivered meals program, housing and home improvement, information case assistant in senior centers, and then transportation. This year, allocation was a little bit less from the state, so this has actually already been voted on this budget, and it will change a little bit. So you'll be seeing a budget amendment from what came from senior services to our approved budget to reflect these numbers. So we'll be reducing some of the services this year because of our funds were cut a little bit this year. This has been approved by our advisory board, and it's being suggested to be approved by the board.
One quick question, about how much was the difference?
About $24,000.
That's what I was thinking. Okay. Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve the budget proposal as presented.
Make such a motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Turlington, you're back up, sir. Oh, you're not, you're not going to get it. You're going to let them do it. Okay, that's fine with me. Y'all been third under the bus, just so you know.
Good evening.
Good evening. If you will introduce yourselves and notice everybody.
Hello. My name is Emma Leggio. I work with Dewberry Engineers, and I work with Mark on all of the water projects in Sampson County.
That's your heart. Okay, go ahead.
So, Gene, if you wouldn't mind, I just wanted to give another brief update on some of the other projects that Mark mentioned earlier. Gene's going to open the computer. I have a map to show you of all the roads that have been completed thus far on the Ivanhoe Project, just so that you guys have a visual of where the work is actually being done. To date, the work has all been installing the water mains themselves. The contractor will go back and install service connections once the piping is complete. So you can see here, work is mostly complete on Lisbon Bridge Road heading down Harrell's Highway. And they have also completed also Dr. Carr Road, Ivanhoe Road, Alpine Church Road, Hoover Road, Barn Hill Road, Eddie L. Jones Road, Jumping Run Road, and McCoy Loop. And that is shown in all of the highlighted areas. So they still need to complete some of the sections in between to connect the lines, and from there, they will pressure test, pressure test the system and install the service lines. But thus far, they have made pretty significant progress. Additionally, Mark mentioned before, we will be including Wildcat Road, which was a part of the original project, and they are currently advertising for residents to connect to the system until August 28th. So that is on the Sampson County website for anyone who's interested. The GFL Water Main Project, we are currently working on receiving approval for permits from the permitting agencies. We have gone ahead and requested a milestone extension request from the Division of Water Infrastructure, as we have not met the original deadline date of August 1st. This will be extended until October 1st, 2025, and will not affect any future milestone dates. In the future, the next step will be to advertise and bid the project, and that will be done in December of this year. The next project is the Clement Area Phase 2 Water Main Extensions. Currently, 90% of design is complete, and our next step will begin applying for permitting, which we expect to be complete around mid-September. And I believe those are all of my initial project updates. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. So I'll move into our action items. The first is the Ivanhoe Water System Change Order. This proposed change order for the Ivanhoe Water System Project aims to include additive Schedule B from the original contract. This will expand the project to include water main extensions and residential service connections along Longview Lake Road and a portion of Harrell's Highway. This change order would increase the total contract price by $321,845.96. This would bring the total contract price to $10,396,259.10. No additional funds are required outside of the original grant amount for this addition, and it's shown in the map above with the green highlight.
So we got all the monies covered, what we need is there.
Correct. Yes.
That's what I was thinking. Make sure I heard all of that right.
So Dewberry recommends the approval of this change order for the Ivanhoe Water System Project. Have any other questions?
Any questions? I entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? Getting too fast with my gavel. Motion so carries. Thank you. On to the next one then.
Yes, sir. So the next up is the award, the tentative award for the northern and southern test and production well project. This proposed project aims to expand the public water supply system in Sampson County with the addition of two additional groundwater wells. The primary goal is to increase the capacity of the county water system and the amount of potable water available for county residents. This phase of the project is, only includes the drilling and installation of the test and production wells. Future development may take place based on the results of this initial project. And the locations are near King Road and near Taylor's Bridge Highway. One bid was received on July 15th, following a re-advertisement of bids due to only one being submitted during our initial bid opening on July 1st. A.C. Schultes of Carolina Incorporated is the apparent low bidder with a bid of $775,715. This project is considered a system improvement project and will be funded through the SL 2023-134 Appropriations Act Directed Funds and the State Capital Infrastructure Funds. Dewberry recommends the board tentatively award the contract to A.C. Schultes of Carolina Incorporated, which is the apparent low responsible, responsive bidder based on the total base bid price.
Any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to award the bid to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion so carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, the approval is needed to adopt the funding offer and acceptance letter for the SL 2023-134 Appropriated Act Directed Funds, which will accept $1.255 million for the project, for the southern groundwater well project.
Any questions? Do you have a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion so carries. Thank you. Lease of our county property, that's on you. Paul Allen?
Evening, commissioners. Before you tonight, we have a lease with the Department of Adult Correction. This is a three-year lease, and it's coming before you because it deals with an agency of the state, and it's a three-year term. The Department of Adult Corrections is currently leasing space out at 405 County Complex Road, as well as at the Sampson County Courthouse. The current lease has expired and is currently in a holdover position, and the state is requesting and would like to renew this lease for a three-year term. We'll request a motion to approve.
Raise $1. Any further questions, if anyone on board? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, authorize the execution of a lease agreement between Sampson County and North Carolina Department of Adult Correction, probation, and parole.
All right. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right, going on to our board appointees.
Mr. Chairman, the jury commission appointment, the clerk of court, Honorable Chris Fan, has nominated Ms. Mary Two for the jury commission at the board's pleasure.
Now, Ms. Two has served before, and I did talk to him about it, and he feels very comfortable with what she's done in the past. with what she's done in the past, so I'm taking a motion.
Take a motion as she returns to the same.
Ms. Mary Two, okay. And a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion so carries. All right, we're gonna move on into our public comment section, and I don't think we need to read rules. I hear one is adult enough and knows what's going on, so we're gonna move right along with Mr. Anthony Apostle Munn. You're up first, sir. Good evening, gentlemen.
My name is Anthony Munnz. I'm a civil rights advocate, and I need to provide public nervous notice to Sampson County. This is accordance with the U.S. CS Rules of Civil Procedures, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has overarching requirements that every state must follow. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 states no person shall be held to answer for capital or otherwise infamous crime unless presentment or indictment by a grand jury. However, the state of North Carolina has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits persecution, attorneys and police officers to charge by way of information as opposed to indictment. And a moment violation is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforces this. Article 1, Section 10 says, "No state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts police officers, prosecutors, judges," and are all under a contract, a contract to perform based on the oath or affirmation that they took to support and defend the Constitution. The Fourteenth Amendment is the other place that you will find the reinforcement of this issue, and that is where it states that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are, at a minimum, those enumerated within the bills of rights. The first 10 amendments. Unfortunately, the state of North Carolina has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that permits public officials, judges, law enforcement officers, whom you all pay, to violate the Constitution of the United States. As a result, there is an inordinate amount of people currently in prison in the state of North Carolina legally and unconstitutionally. Tawana Downing is litigating this issue at the United States Supreme Court. I'm currently here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, criminal sanctions can come from that. Officials must be made aware that paying people to disobey the law is an amendment violation, is illegal, it's unconstitutional, it's a crime. I'm asking you, honorably individuals, to please take a look at Clause 1 of Amendment 5, confirm what I'm saying to be true, and then direct your public officials to act lawfully constitutional manner consistently with obligations that are kindified in the Constitution of the United States of America. I have a copy I would like to place on record that you all can have as proof that I did do this, so whoever needs to get this, I want to submit this into record, please.
She could.
We'll get it.
Do you need to review it?
Give it to who?
It's you.
It need to be put on.
I'll make sure, I'll make sure I get where it ought to be. Thank you, sir.
All right.
I'm gonna pass it down. Pass it down to you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a blessed night.
All right, brother, you too. All right, Jay Ingram, Ingram, I think, is up.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
A couple of months ago, I spoke on concerning the speed limit on Ole Miss Highway. We've had several accidents, and no one has gotten hurt, to my knowledge. I think just last week, we had another one. I'm very, very concerned, because there's no need for the truckers to drive as fast as they do. What we have to understand is that we have some older people. You may not be old now, but one day you will, you'll get there. And when you pull out of your driveway, you can see a truck miles away, but then within seconds, he's right on your bumper. If there's something can be done, we have a lot of farm equipment. I think I lost a mailbox last week due to the farm equipment. They don't stop, they keep going. Even if you could get some, some kind of warning signs posted saying, "Farm equipment, please slow down, because if not, someone's gonna get hurt." And not only that, on Claude Drag, that section, if I'm out there driving, going to Roseboro, and I meet a big truck, I have to get on the shoulder and roll. Now, 242, over in Elizabeth Town, they put a shoulder on that all the way in, but that 242 going Elizabeth Town don't have no way as much traffic as Ole Miss Highway and Claude Drag. This is where all the big trucks go. So really, I'm concerned. I take pride in our community. I love our community. I don't want to see nobody get hurt. We should be able to drive safe and respect other people, especially the old ones, because like I said, one day, you may not be old now, but if you live long enough, and the only way you'll get old, you sure gonna die young, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment period. At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to our county manager for comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Just have a few things to share with you. First, I'd like to let you know that I continue to go out and about and meet with the department heads and meet the folks out at the various buildings as much as possible, and everybody's been very gracious and spent a lot of time with me, showing me around. This Wednesday, just to make you aware, I am touring with Ms. Kelsey Edwards with all of the libraries, and will be spending the, pretty much the whole morning up until lunchtime doing that as well. While we're on the theme of talking about the departments and the buildings, I just want to mention that the move that was taking place with planning inspections, environmental health, and then the domino effect of IT moving as well, all of those moves have taken place, and they are situated, still settling, but for the most part situated. They have done a, just a great job, and I want to thank the staff. They've really been troopers about this situation, and so that's all finally come together. Next on my list, I want to mention that we had an EOC mock training exercise in mid-July. Of course, that's been through us. I understand there's been a series of training events through Rick Sauer and the Emergency Services Department. I think these, these events are, these training events are invaluable, because it's obviously not just prepping for hurricanes, storm events like that, but it could be most anything. So that incident command structure is critical for, for everyone that plays their part and their role to understand in the event we have a real-life situation. And again, the, the people that are a part of this have just been great and great attitudes about trying to continuously improve and make themselves better, to be able to better serve the citizens of the county. So that's greatly, greatly appreciated. And while we're talking about that, I think it's worth mentioning, you know, we certainly have uncertainty with FEMA, the way things have been restructured, various cuts that have taken place and things like that. Naturally, there's a lot of uncertainty surrounding that whole, that whole department and how that would work in the event, you know, we really had some kind of hurricane event or whatever it is and the potential impacts to funding. So we don't know for sure what that may look like yet, but it's certainly worth considering and thinking about as we go forward. Wanted to mention to you that we have met with the NC ACC, and we will have a final meeting this week to establish receiving a strategic project coordinator, and this is a master's level person who will be able to assist various departments, and we're, we're going to kind of solidify what, what those needs would be when we meet with them this week. This will be no cost to Sampson County, but it will certainly be a big help to have those additional hours to assist us with various projects and what have you. And this would be, this person would have a background with a master's in public administration, so they're very interested in local government, and they're very interested in learning about the different areas of local government and what have you. So it would certainly be a win-win, and it would be for about 30 hours a week, is what we're looking at, and we're not sure yet for how long this program would run, but we plan to learn those details again this week. And it's my understanding as well that Commissioner Lee had a big part in coordinating this for us, as far as making us aware of it. So thank you, Commissioner Lee. That's, that's great that we're going to be able to have this. Next, I wanted to mention that Ray and I had a, a meeting with the, with Alyssa Garcia. She's the RPO Coordinator with Mid Carolina, and we talked about some things, and I know some things that you're aware of, Mr. Chairman, and we talked about how we could maybe streamline the process of how we communicate our needs, communicate our projects, and the various groups and stakeholders, all the way up the chain to the state level. We're sending the same message, and it's a clear message, and we're very, very clear about what we need. So we certainly have some ideas that were proposed by her, and a lot of great information, and it's, it's a tremendous amount of information that if the board would be interested, we'd certainly like to ask her to come and present before the board to share, to share this with you. And beyond that, I just want to share that we did close on my house, and we're looking to move, we're having some work done in the house, and we're looking to move the weekend, move in the weekend of August 22nd. So I'm looking forward to that, because I'm a little tired of that commute back and forth to Wilmington. So we're very excited about that, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Do I have any comments from our, or reports from our commissioners?
I have a report from Sampson County Schools, since I am the liaison for Sampson County Schools. I talked with Dr. King, and he presented me with some information that's very exciting about what's gonna be taking place in our school system in Sampson County. They're getting all kinds of grants. They're having a high dosage virtual tutoring grant, which will affect Sellemberg and Roseboro Elementary School, Advanced Teacher Rhodes Grant for $2.8 million, Community Schools $2.8 million grant that would affect Lakewood High, Roseboro, Sellemberg Middle, Sellemberg Elementary, and Roseboro Elementary. These monies would fund community liaisons that will go out into the communities and work with families and getting them educated on how important it is to keep their children in school, and how important it is that they send them every day. Spark Lab at Union High School, they're getting a $1,000 grant to start that program up. The Gold Leaf Math Initiative, they're getting $1.8 million for that, and that's gonna be at Union Middle School. North Carolina Teaching Fellows Recruitment Grant, they're getting $55,000 annually for that. And they're still working on a Hopeton High School construction, which they got $62 million for that grant, and everything is looking good with that grant so far. So I'm just so very proud of Sampson County Schools for achieving these grants, because it's gonna help the community, it's gonna help our schools, gonna help our children to get better educated with these grants. I'm just so proud that they applied for them and received them.
Thank you. Appreciate that report. Anyone?
I can, I can let you have this if you... Okay.
To the county of Sampson County has received an award for '25, a Reader's Choice Award to be number one, the Sampson Independent Paper, and that's due to the county. People that read that paper, you become number one. This certifies that Sampson Rotary Club being part of this, best civic organization, and so it's a congratulations to the Sampson Independent Paper for what they do and the size they are.
Thank you.
We should have a president of the Rotary Club.
Yes.
Oh, you're, you're what in order to call?
Press that.
Oh, okay, I got it. Page seven on the back there, go ahead. Anyone else?
I will have a report next week, or next month, on my status as liaison to the business community. I will be attending the Chamber of Commerce monthly meeting next week, or, yeah, yeah, next Tuesday, so I can't give a report right now.
You're doing fine, sir. Yes, you good?
Yes, sir. I'll be attending the next community college meeting. I was out of county during the last one, so.
And I, I hope, I hope everyone understands that these appointments that we've all taken, and we're gonna report about you, is, is very serious to us. We think it gives us a high end to really help our community and get us, I want it just to be more open and visual when we're out, and people feel good about coming up to the commissioners, and then you guys feel good about talking to us. I mean, we don't want to, we don't know, know bridge between, we want you to be able to come and feel free to talk to us about anything, so.
Mr. Chairman, there's one other thing I failed to mention that I would like to address or at least bring to the board's attention and Mr. Van's attention, is I've received a phone call from a, a property owner in Sampson County. He's not a resident of Sampson County, but he is a property owner, and he wanted us as a county to do something about requiring our dollar stores and other retail establishments to provide trash cans out front so that client, customers, when they leave, can throw the plastic bags away instead of taking their articles out of the bags and then dropping the bags on the ground. He says he's had to pick up a lot of dollar store bags out of the ditches around his property at Reynolds Crossroads, and he said where he lives, his community requires all the dollar stores and grocery stores to, to have trash cans receptacles out front so the customers can throw away their waste on their way to their car, and he thought that would be a good idea for Sampson County to explore and wanted me to bring that to your attention, so I told him I would, so thank you for anything we can do to address that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You good?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, that's why I think we had the 90-second-long closed session that involves confidential information, attorney-client privilege, economic development, and some personal matters. So at this time, we're gonna go into closed session upon...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Section A1, Section A3, Section A4, and Section A6, to go into closed session to discuss confidential information as attorney-client privilege for economic development and to discuss personnel matters.
So moved.
All those in favor? We're in closed session. We're in closed session.
We are back out of closed session, back into our regular convening meeting. I will...
Make a motion. Mr. Chairman, I make the motion. We adjourned closed session and go back into open session.
Very good. I want a favor. I want a second. You got a second? I want a favor.
I'm motion that we adjourn.
Adjourn. Exactly. I want us a favor. I'm gonna get this right. Everybody can tell we're ready to go home. Okay, thank you.